Hello, I'd like to call the meeting of the Hampton Board Selectmen for January 17, 2023 to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're starting at 5:30 because of a presentation being done on the direction and the future of the fire department in Hampton at 6 o'clock. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Zoom. Is there anybody else recording the meeting? Got it? No, don't blame him. All right. First order of business are the minutes of December 5th and December 19. Yvonne came in, give us a little recap.
Yeah, what's the next step on that? Where are we on that? Going back, they presented something they...
Well, CONCON was in favor of it, so I can give... I don't know the people's names, the presenters, and call them and at least find out what's next.
Yeah, I think we need to try to be a CONCON, it's like a board will continue the conversation with them, so we should invite them in. Look at our schedule for the 30th and the first meeting in February, see if we can work them in. Actually, that's a good time. Watch your review with them. We'll bring them in to discuss that and their budget at the same time. So they may want to delay until they have a meeting to agree their budget.
As far as the Yvonne part goes, I don't know if they want to make note that I had concerns about the no fishing and no access to the water.
I thought I...
It just says that they're not going to have that, but those were the concerns that was raised.
Okay.
Actually, I think it was a comment from that through Zoom, I think.
Is there anything in there?
Yes.
It's for a half an hour, Doug. And then it's six weeks, switch over. Okay, minutes of effect.
Move approval of the amendment by the Department of Representatives to change or addition corrections.
Notation.
Notation. Second. On favor? Minutes of December 19. One thing in the future, Pam, if you could add the time we do adjourn events.
Oh, well, typically I do. It's not anymore?
Hmm?
I said typically I do.
I know.
Okay, sorry.
Unless it was like an M and B, you want people to know.
Uh, maybe that's the case.
Motion to approve December 19th and February 17th. Thank you. On favor? Okay. Next up, we have a presentation from Ty and Yvonne, and I see on Zoom that Yvonne, you're ready to go.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to present, I guess, the possible renovation of the Hampton Town Hall to serve as a town hall office building for maybe the next 30 years or so. So I'm going to share my screen and show you what I've come up with so far, and hopefully you can have some of your comments as far as what I've done. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So this is the lower level floor plan of the Hampton Town Hall. The office spaces for all the occupants have been relayed out a little bit differently than what they previously were. I do not yet closets or things like that. Those things could be worked out later. It was just, this is more just for space planning. So some things needed to be done here just for accessibility issues. Like, for example, we needed accessible men's and women's restrooms, an accessible drinking fountain, some are building code also, you need janitors, classically part of the plumbing code. And so what I've done is actually, being that there are a lot of changes being made in the building, the bathrooms needs to be brought up to current code. With that, the building needs quite a few more toilets and sinks and urinals than it currently has. So the way that has functioned, and part of, I think, accessibility code says that you have to have the bathrooms on both on each floor. So I've separated the total amount of restrooms, of, I'm sorry, of toilet fixtures and so forth between the two floors. They're basically copied the same area from the lower level to the upper level. So the women's restroom is nestled right in here. You have an accessible toilet here. This one is what's called an alternate accessible, kind of serves as an accessible toilet. And these are other standard required ones. Sinks would be in this location. The men's, you'd have your accessible toilet here along with three additional toilets. On this side, there'll be two urinals and three sinks. Now, this is just preliminary, just to get an idea for space, how much space, you know, would need to be taken up in a building for such things. These things could always, you know, if we decide to go with this route, we lay this out in a different configuration, that could always be done. So basically, you enter through like this little nook, and you go in this way or this way depending, you're going to men's or women's rooms. And here you have your drinking fountain. And then you have your janitor's closet right here, which is, I think it's a building code requirement. So that's here. So you have like this entire piece. So I'll just go down to, I'm sorry, not down, I'll go up to the next level. Same thing gets duplicated here. And it was interesting to determine how many toilets and sinks and so forth. It goes by square footage and the types of spaces, and that helps you determine the number of occupants, and especially because we have an auditorium and Melville room, those rooms can accommodate a lot of seating, and those really increase the amount of occupants that could, you know, be within the building. And therefore, we had a, have quite a few additional toilets and sinks. So I'll go back down to the lower level. So that's for accessibility. The other piece we have to do for accessibility is provide an elevator. So you, we have the parking here. So we had a door, existing door here. So you'd enter here, and you'd have an elevator which would take you to a little bit various floors. So you could take it, and this is a new stair, because there was an original stair here, so we had to provide a new one to replace it. We can't just delete it out of the building. So this is here. To get down, I'll just take you down one level to the boiler room. Really, all you need is a stair, but elevator might always be helpful for like equipment or anything else you might need to bring up or down. So it's not really for people with accessibility issues to get to the boiler room, but it just helps, you know, to carrying heavy things. So that's that. So you come back here, you get through the elevator, you go, I believe you go down a little bit here. And now you're at the lower level. So in order to get to the Melville room, you could either go through, you know, existing stairs, or you have a platform lift, because this elevator, I couldn't get you in this way because you're blocked by a boiler room. So best they can do is get an elevator to get you down to the main lower level. Then you have a lift. If anybody then has accessibility issues, they can use this lift to get you down to the Melville room. And to gain access to these rooms, all the rooms here are basically existing remain, they'll get new finishes, but the storage is here, cemetery office, conservation commission, the lower, you know, boiler room below, as well as electrical rooms, those remain. The kitchenette would be revised, the configuration would be different. Basically, I just created something for now and as a placeholder, but this would be a fridge and counter, microwave, sink, and maybe some kind of, you know, like an island thing. And then you have the rest of your Melville room for your meetings or whatever you need to do there. So I guess for the lower level, the rooms that we have here, I tried to lay it out as logically as I thought, but, you know, if anybody wants a larger, smaller room, or maybe different, I guess, rooms next to each other, maybe not the order in which I had arranged it, I mean, those comments would be very helpful because I'm going to be making one more change to this, and we could talk about that. So as you come here, I also created a door here because you need a fire separation from this exit stair. So that's just separates out that. So the first room here, you go through here, you have a town clerk's office, another room here could, which be a separated portion of the space. And then down here, you'd have your treasurer, your parks and recreation. On this area, you would have the first assessor's office, second assessor's office, and the accounting space. Then I, here also, I've separated these stairs by a set of double doors and a fire-rated wall, just to keep everything separate from the main interior corridor and the rooms. I'll go over up to the first floor. So here, you're in the elevator already, you've entered from down below. You can come out this way, and you're on a stage level. So that gives accessible entrance to the stage. If you go this way, you'll get to the main first floor. To get to the auditorium, since that's like at a mid-level, just like the Melville room was, we'll have another platform lift which would take you down here, and that's your accessible entrance to the auditorium. You still always can get in through these doors and these, like you always had before. Again, fire separation from this space, and this is separated from these stairs. So on this level, I mean, like again, this is what I thought would work best, but yeah, you could always correct me. So we have the building commissioner's office here, and I was told there was a need for an additional conference room. It could be made, you know, larger if needed, but I was just thinking, you know, something for the long conference table, seating, maybe, you know, a TV screen, whatever else you might need. And this would be your third space for virtual meetings. So you have your Melville room, your auditorium, and this space. Past that is the planning board office, the town administrator, up here would be the selectmen office, board of health director, and board of health. In addition to that, you know, ceilings would be new, flooring would be, you know, new, new walls, things like that. The main corridor walls, I believe, these are structural, so we're trying to keep these, you know, where they are. But I guess that's all I have to say as far as this. So this is my first pass at this. I'd like to hear any comments. I could email this to all of you as well, if you'd like to, you know, sit down and think it through. But yeah, I mean, if there's anybody has any comments to say at the moment, that'd be great, or otherwise, I could just email it and wait for your responses as well.
All right, thank you, Yvonne. We'll go in order here. Obviously, passing by the fact that the library's gone.
Yes.
Are there any offices that were diminished in space? It did look like perhaps the assessors are getting less room than they had before.
Assessors, so... Well, I really went off of what Barma Kell told me as far as how much space was needed by each office, and it was, my guidelines were like, one, one person and some file space. So, you know, for like the assessors, right? That's why that room would be smaller. Like the counting room, I believe, was like three part-time or, or people that, it was something like that, so that was where that was given large in space. So if these rooms are not large enough for your purposes, I mean, that's great information. I could always relay things out, or if you want different adjacencies between offices, I can fix that. But that, I just went off of the information that I was given, so I wasn't really, yeah.
Something to look at. Also, if the library's not there...
Yes.
Do you have to need that much bathroom space? I mean, you have, about the library, you have, I don't know, 10, 12 employees in the town hall, and you've got enough restroom facilities for 25 right there?
We've got quite a, quite a bit. So this is about bringing the building up to code. So currently, the number of bathrooms, I'm sorry, actually toilets and sinks that you have per men's and women's restrooms is not adequate. It's not up to code. It probably was up to code a long time ago when the building was built. But the reason we need to increase is because when you calculate for these things, like, it's not how many occupants, it goes by square footage. So we have office spaces. So I did a square footage of all the office spaces. Then that's not that bad, but when you go into a space like a Melville room, which is a meeting room, so I only use the area like from here to here and maybe to here. Now, that gets divided by a much smaller number, which results in quite a lot more people possibly being able to be in that room. And that's determined whether you have fixed seating, loose, you know, movable chairs or fixed tables. And I calculated for movable chairs because basically, and tables, I mean, but they could take them out or put them in, and it gives you a much smaller number to divide that. So it's 1,200 square feet net, and you, I don't remember what it was, 15 square feet per person, so that's what increased the number there. And if you went into the auditorium, we had 2,060 square feet net by about 50, I'm sorry, 15 square feet per person. I did use aisles for that. I mean, I didn't mark them here, but I figured a few chairs and aisle chairs and some kind of aisle. Tried to break it down a little bit like that, but pretty much this is what you're going to need if you decide to renovate this building and bring it up to code.
Okay, thank you. And then really don't see much of an addition for storage. I know we're talking about going to some digital storage, but really, although the buildings, I mean, the rooms aren't really fleshed out in terms of closets, per se.
Correct.
It'd be more of an effort to get additional storage space in the town hall. And we still have, what I saw on the bottom floor...
Yes.
Bathroom by the kitchen, and that's about it.
You have this. So did you want actual and additional storage room? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think we needed.
Okay, well, that wasn't on my list. That's, maybe that's the only reason it's not there. I was kind of said, told that, you know, yes, most of the spaces can go to digital filing, but not everyone. And therefore, someone need filing cabinets and maybe some closets within, like say the treasurer's office would have their own closets and filing cabinets, and each apartment would have their own. So I could create additional storage space. I mean, if there's any floor you'd like it on, since we have one here already, maybe, maybe a different floor is better, but I could, you know, I could make space for that. But some of the other rooms would get smaller, and I'd need to know, you know, which rooms are maybe too large, which rooms need to be larger and by how much, and if things, if you like things to be shifted around and a storage space, you know, at least which floor you'd like it to be in, approximately how big you'd like it to be as far as square footage or dimensions or some kind of guidance would be very helpful. But I could definitely fit that in.
All right, thank you. Next, on favor?
As far as storage space goes, it looked like the town clerk's office and the building department had substantially larger spaces. I'm assuming they would be able to house stored stuff internally there. It was the conservation commission that didn't see any increase in size there. And so my two-part question is, you have the lift there getting into the Melville room.
Yes.
Would we be able to omit the stairs and put a ramp in there instead, and then increase the size of, say, the conservation room so they could have more internal storage? I don't know if that's possible, I'm just asking.
I do know that the number has increased, the rise to whatever is run is much worse, I wouldn't say worse, but much more extended. I think at that drop, you'd almost need a 12-foot ramp going down into it.
I don't know what the drop would be at that range there.
Yeah, yeah. Craig brings up a good point. We had talked one time about consolidating the different departments that have needs to interface with each other. And I think, looking at that, I'd like to see conservation near planning, near building, because, I mean, they share a lot of, there's a lot of commonality in plans, things like that, and they might also want access to a conference room area like we have where they can meet and spread out plans.
Okay.
The big table.
Yeah, right. You had that conference area back on the other floor.
Or we just turn it over to the conference area.
Could be surrounded by all the different departments that need that.
Okay.
You know, one of the advantages of the current layout is that the departments that interact regularly every day are all on the same floor. I'm a little concerned that the administrator is on the second floor, because...
That's what everybody voted on Bob, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I mean, every day, I end up interacting with the clerk, usually with the treasurer, and oftentimes with the accountant. And by the way, I see the office for the accountant is much larger. Seems like the current office is, maybe needs more space, but not, I'm wondering why so much space for the accountant. And we also, I mean, I see the chief assessor comes in regularly, we interact with...
Well, that's part about the assessors, with one or two people. I mean, I think that's really, you know, you see the assessors, Bob, Norm coming in quite often, two people working there, they have a lot of, that's why I mean, this is, and Yvonne, don't take it wrong, this is a first pass through it. Obviously, there's going to be questions about maybe shifting walls. The one thing I do know is here, this is gutting a lot of what we have right here. When you talk about building out four bathrooms, five really, you know, and taking out the one we put in, I can't even sort of guess what the cost would be in the new bathrooms.
Well, then the other, the elephant room is the library. What do we, where's that going?
And then when you put an elevator in and stuff like that, so at first blush, this is something.
Is it possible to get this emailed so we can digest it a little bit further, and then...
Yes, I definitely...
Maybe make suggestions or ideas or whatever.
I would like, I would like to email to all of you, maybe get written comments, that would be better, I think, if we need to have another discussion. Say, I'm trying to make it work and having a little bit difficulty, maybe another discussion to see how things could be shifted, you know, because I'm sure everyone's going to have different comments, right? So just to make, try to make everyone happy, you know, as much as possible. So I will email this to all of you.
Do you have a guess, and I'm sure this is uncommon, building practice or whatever, renovations per square foot? Is there like a, really, a ballpark estimate of what this would cost? I mean, this is a 30,000-foot view, you can't be specific, but I mean, are we looking at a half million dollars, a million dollars?
I'm not sure offhand, but I can get that number for you if you'd like, and I could email that to you as well. Ballpark. I mean, eventually we'll provide, yeah, eventually we're going to provide a, or it won't be totally accurate, but a better estimate, you know, upon, you know, the final, you know, plan of this, but I'll try to get you a ballpark figure.
I think it goes without saying, it probably goes in conjunction with all the other aspects of the study in the camera, structural and...
And now you talk about that part, definitely, with this type of work with top and bottom floors, you're looking at a whole new HVAC system, basically. And then go back to your point, Craig, are we moving the library to the fire station and building who hold the fires? What's, what's the whole thing? You know, you pull one thread, the whole sweater is coming apart here.
Yeah.
So, Don?
Yeah, she could email the plans.
Yeah, this is really, I mean, we appreciate the first blush at it, and I think, you know, we really can't get too specific here, Frank.
Yeah, hope it's a lot of...
Okay.
So, thank you very much. We'll look forward to the emails, and we'll go from there.
And as far as emailing this, whom do I email it to, or will...
Just email it to me, and I'll make sure that the selectmen get it and others who have an interest.
No problem. Okay, thank you very much.
And we're going to go over this tomorrow with department heads at 10 o'clock.
Yes, we are. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have this recording already?
Yeah, it's recording, yeah. We're going to shut it off, and they close this meeting, because I've set up another Zoom for meetings that come after this.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you had a early meeting.
Well, that's what...
Okay, okay.
Next on the agenda, Eva is going to give us a quick update on ethics mandate and any thoughts about your need or your desire or your non-desire. No, drop now.
It's not working.
It's all right, I'm a big mouth. I'm sorry, what was the update I'm giving you?
Quick updates on where we stand with the ethics mandate and your thoughts about the R and M.
Oh, okay. Ethics mandate, I have, I had already signed up with the state, so the state will oversee all that, and we'll just be able to track reports and things. So basically, everybody's responsible for some of that. When I get a confirmation from them that they are up and running, and they weren't expecting that to happen until February, then I'll send out a notice that everybody say, hey, yes, Bob, it's that time again. What's next? I'm sorry.
And everyone registers on their own, right?
Yes, but I want to wait until we know it's up and running, so I can go without looking for them and say, yep.
And the conflict of interest is part of that as well?
That's all the train is, correct, it's all complete, yep.
Okay. Okay, records access officer.
Records access officer, we were looking into something like that, and the facility could do that. I wanted a machine that was like a high-speed, so everything could be scanned in and sorted, so that we could sort things into the proper files. That's one of the things about making the records, they will make them available readily for record requests and stuff. When I was at Wood, it was big bucks. Bob says he's looking to, he's got grant money into getting that type of facility, something, why should I pay when we're getting, when we're going to get it for nothing, so to speak, when we're getting an opportunity to buy it at more than my expense? You know, I'm being selfish here. So it's not something I am worried about having done in a hurry, as long as I know there's an end in sight. We have the hard copy records. It's not that we aren't prepared to answer record requests or anything. It's just that we might make life easier with regards to looking them up.
Well, yes, but I mean, this is, we're talking more about who's the physical person that's going to be assigned that task. We need to fund that.
Well, I don't want to fund anything, because we have something that can work out. We need the machinery, we need the scanner, whatever, before I put anyone in place, because it doesn't make sense to have someone come in and not be able to actually process these records.
You're waiting for the course before we can build a car?
Well, yes, but right now, if you've got a request, we're doing it manually yourself, basically.
Correct, that's, yeah. But anytime I do pull a request like that, I find that if I keep records of the things I do electronically, they come and feed me again oftentimes, so, yeah.
All right, well, we just, anything else you need to come up with?
Nope, I'm good.
We'd love to hear that.
Yeah.
5:50.
Real quickly, we have...
5:57.
You've got a used car license and, oh, the agreement that we need to see.
Okay, move approval of the used car license for 52 Main Street. All in favor? I am. Okay. And we had already, I thought we had already voted, you can send a agreement to...
Some time ago, like so long ago, I'm not sure. This is different. This is something...
The work of soul. Yeah.
We, he can't find it. Steve can't find it, so I figured just vote it and do it.
The soul of the electric company.
This is different, John.
Do we audit the better, or do you want to plan?
I think just one.
Who we operate, chairs, flying, labor, incentive business, payment for the solar facility.
It's...
Use the, use the... Favor? All right, but just a quick report, I did stop by, some of the town halls, look at their use of the fish system. Wasn't quite what they said. I stopped at the town manager's office, they weren't aware of any usage of it. Sent me to the assessor's office, they really weren't aware of it. So I'm going to go back there, I'm going to talk to the IT guy, Brian Quinn, and see what he sees, what he sees the user. I'll get back to you next week with more. Hopefully, they have some other places we can stop at. And a quick report, uh... Bob, do you have a quick report?
No, as I said, I'm going to put it all into the Monday's report.
Okay, sure enough, then you can put some forward. All right, so the plan here is that we're going to adjourn our meeting, and there is going to be a public presentation and comment period from the, our consultants, EPTON, on where we stand with the fire department, their basic current usage. fire department, their basically current usage, and what vision we have for what they need for the town to handle. We're looking for audience input. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Quickly, a quickie, that's it. All in shape, I'd like to either...
End?
Yeah.